The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
All right, we're gonna get started here. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna call this meeting. This is special council meeting due to our scheduling requirements for our budget hearings. We're having tonight on, it's Thursday, July 13th. Can't believe it's that late in the year already. So everyone, please stand and join us in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present with the excitement. Let. Okay, tonight, we start the meeting with a very wonderful story concerning our very own Palm Beach County State College and their history. Many people may not know it, but they've been around for ninety years. Wow, that is impressive. That really is. And in recognition of that, there is a proclamation I'd like to share with everyone this evening and a plaque that we will be presenting at the conclusion of me reading the proclamation, okay? All right, so whereas Palm Beach State College was founded in nineteen thirty-three as Florida's first public two-year college and has continuously served the educational needs of Palm Beach County residents for ninety years. First as a junior college, then as a community college, and now as a state college. And whereas Palm Beach State College, since opening its doors on November fourteenth, nineteen thirty-three, as Palm Beach Junior College has grown from forty-one local students in three classrooms, wow, to forty thousand students from a hundred fifty-one county, countries and territories studying on five campuses located in Boca Raton, Belgrade, Lake Worth, Loxahatchie Groves, and Palm Beach Gardens. And online, everything's online nowadays, right? Palm Beach Junior State, Palm Beach Junior College merged with Roosevelt Junior College in nineteen sixty-five, which was established in nineteen fifty-eight to serve African-American students. Whereas Palm Beach State College has been integral to the remarkable growth and prosperity of Palm Beach County, our graduates, community and business leaders for generations have impacted every industry and continue to do so today. And whereas Palm Beach State College, one of the top producers of associate degree graduates in the United States, also offers baccalaureate degrees, professional certifications, career training, and corporate and continuing education. And whereas with more than a hundred thirty programs of study, Palm Beach State College is the country's leading educator of skilled professionals. Career programs span fields such as healthcare, computer science, business, technology, creative arts, childcare, human services, teacher education, environmental science, landscape management, and a wide variety of skilled trades, engineering, electrical power, public, and safety. Wow, that's incredible list. And whereas Palm Beach State College, mission of providing accessible, student-centered teaching and learning experiences in academic, technical, and lifelong learning to transform lives and strengthening our community is critical to the vitality of the Village of Royal Palm Beach. And whereas Royal Palm Beach, Florida commemorates the ninetieth anniversary of Royal Palm Beach, of Royal Palm Beach, I already changed the name, of Palm Beach State College, this little slip of this. Some blunder, yeah. With college, with Palm Beach State College, with appreciation for its vital role as a provider of excellence in education and career training and as a driver of economic mobility and partnership with our community, Palm Beach County and State of Florida proclaim this thirteenth day of July, two thousand twenty-three, some ninety years later, all right, as Palm Beach State County Day. We have a plaque here we'd like to present to you, but if you'd like to make comments before we come present the plaque, now would be the time.
I think I'd be used to that by now. Just first, thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you to the council for having us and recognizing Palm Beach State College. It's a thrill to be a part of the central western communities. I was just sharing earlier that we just broke ground on our second building at Loxahatchie Groves, which is our dental building, and Ed Wiley serves as our Dean of Health Sciences. So we're very excited to get that, that building up and get more students out to the central part. And I think that once that building opens, we're already, we opened the doors six years ago now, if you can believe that.
Yes, I remember. It was there, yeah.
It's hard to believe, isn't it? With about seven hundred students, I believe, in our first semester, and now we enroll about six thousand. So it's, it's pretty awesome. And we're one building. So imagine when we have the health sciences programs and the dental out, it's gonna be, it's just gonna explode.
Now, that's the dentist's school that's gonna be moving in there?
The dental building, yes. That's one of the programs that will be there, yes.
You know, we had to kinda come together, we being an elected official from, from the area. I don't know if you remember that meeting, because there was some thinking downtown to not have it come out here and.
Right, yes. Oh, we remember.
That was kinda the original, original plan, and I was, I had an opportunity to speak that day and say, no, we, we've gotta stick with the plan and, and this has, I'm glad to hear that's finally really coming to fruition.
President Parker, you know, Dr. Gallon was here when we purchased the property.
Yes, Dr. Gallon, yes.
And President Parker has been an advocate for ensuring that we were able to make that building come to fruition, and here we are. We broke ground, I think, about a month ago. So, and it's moving quickly so far, knock on wood, praying for no hurricanes, so.
We welcome the dental school out to the western communities.
Yes. So thank you again for having us, and anytime you want us, just call us. We're, we're your partner, so we wanna partner with you, so however we can assist you.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna call a meeting back to order. And next item we hit on our agenda was to receive a legislative update from Representative Gervanti Edmonds. However, I received the message saying that he's a bit under the weather today and would not be able to make it, so we will be rescheduling him to hear his report on all of the things that went on in Tallahassee this last session. So we'll, we'll hear about that at a later date. So with that, I'm gonna open the floor for reports, and I guess we'll start with you, Selena.
Good evening, everyone. A quick update on our girls softball team. They were undefeated for the All-Star season. They went to districts and won. They went to state and won. So now they're going to the World Series next week in Jensen Beach, so we cheer them all on and congratulations to them.
Well, and we're gonna have them here though with us at our next meeting, so we can.
For the next one that they're gonna meet, yeah.
So we can recognize them?
That'd be great. Thanks.
That we're very proud of their work.
We are. Thank you very much. They'll enjoy that. Real quick, just with, you know, we're always outside in the parks and everything, but just be aware that there are lots of people that come through there. They have food allergies, especially a lot of children, so when you're going through the parks or our big events, just make sure you clean up after yourself, because you don't think you have an issue, but there's somebody who comes right behind you that does, so we just wanna make, watch out for them. We have a couple of events coming up. We talked about some already, but we have, 'cause July twenty-second, we're gonna be celebrating Parks and Recreation Month, so from one to six over at Commons Park, we have water slides, bounce houses, kite flying, DJs, food trucks. So all the events, all the activities are free, so please come out and join us. August fourth, we have a Jimi Hendrix tribute band over at Commons Park, and then on August eighteenth at Commons, we're doing a Three Dog Night Tribute Band. So we have some really good concerts coming up. The first of each month is the Royal Palm Beach Book Club from ten to noon over at the Rec Center. And then we talked about, we have the senior activities coming up. August first is the Senior Health Expo from nine to noon at the Cultural Center. And what's really cool is July twenty-eighth, we're doing a virtual museum tour, and it's the Carter Presidential Library from ten thirty to eleven thirty, and that's over at the Cultural Center. So a lot of great events coming up.
A lot of things going on.
Yeah, and that completes my report. Thank you.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Jeff, you're up.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Really?
Don't tempt me now.
Why'd you say that? You shouldn't, you shouldn't say that thing. Okay, that's okay. It's, it's the middle of July, right? No, go ahead, Jeff.
I can't even believe it.
Um, no report except to remind, last chance to remind everybody that we've got our Shakespeare in the fall.
Shakespeare in the fall. I knew somebody was gonna, I knew, I knew we were gonna get that, okay.
Measure by measure, July twentieth to the twenty-third at Commons Park. Enjoy.
Hope it cools off a little bit, right? Ray, what do you have?
No report, Mayor.
Matty?
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
All right, okay. So that will conclude reports this evening. At this time, if anyone has a petition they'd like to present to the council, now would be the time to do that. Seeing no petitions to be presented, I'm gonna close the floor to petitions for the evening. And now we will do a statements from the public on non-agenda items or items on a consent agenda. Diane, we have any advanced public comments that came in?
No, Mayor.
In that regard, no? Ray, anyone got their hand raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay. I have not received any comment cards here this evening on non-agenda items or consent agenda items. So with that, I'm closing public comments to non-agenda items and public, and consent agenda items. Diane, give us the consent agenda, please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, I will. Number one, tentative adoption of the proposed millage rate of one point nine two zero zero, and approval of scheduled public hearings on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty PM, and September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three at six thirty PM in the Village Meeting Hall. Two, approval of the bid award in the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars, and authorization for the village manager to execute a contract with the lowest responsive responsible bidder for fair and uncommon sports lighting, PR two-three zero-three, PR two-three oh-five, to DAFCO Electrical Contractors Corp. Three, approval and authorization to purchase two vehicles from Duval Ford in an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents by piggybacking Bradford County Sheriff's Office contract, BCSO two-two two-seven one point zero.
Yes, that completes the consent agenda. Okay. If there are any comments from members of the council, if not, I'll look for a motion.
I'd like to pull consent agenda item number two, please.
Okay, we'll pull two. I'll look for a motion for the many items.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, last item two.
Second.
We have a motion and second on the paper.
Aye.
Any polls? We have no polls. Diane, let the record show, the consent agenda was approved four, five-zero, with exception of two.
Thank you, and I believe the village manager can answer this one, just basically, 'cause I know there's a process that we go through in order for an item to get on the agenda, especially when it's a budget line item, so if you could just go through that process and then what this is for.
So what this, what this is for is to upgrade the lights at the girls softball complex to state-of-the-art LED lights. The lighting system that we had out there, we were having quite a bit of problems with. We originally constructed that lighting system about fifteen years ago. It's been maintained by different contractors over the years. When we went to, to look at what was necessary to upgrade this, 'cause we were having quite a bit of a problem with the lights that we were having, it ended up being, needing to be completely redesigned and, and the electric, all the wiring and all that completely redone and the circuitry. So we did, our first option to get it as quickly as possible is to, is to piggyback on, on another contract. Our estimates on that were over nine hundred thousand dollars. And there wasn't a good apples-to-apples comparison in the contracts that were out there. So we, we went to the approach of hiring an electrical engineer, designing a new system, getting it out to bid, and now here's the award. So when this came to our attention last year, we, we, we got it in the first year of our five-year capital budget at nine hundred thousand. We did budget it for the, the whole amount of our estimate. The bids came in, and then to shorten the time on that, 'cause the longest lead time on stuff like this is buying the, buying the, the, the equipment and the lights and that. So we're doing self-purchase of the lights, and the contractors were to bid installation, make, or manpower and installation cost. One bidder bid, bid the, the lights, the equipment and the labor, it has, so his bid's over six hundred thousand dollars. The other one bid what he was supposed to do with the labor, that's two hundred and eighty-four that we're asking you to award. We'll be purchasing about three hundred thousand dollars worth of facilities, and we'll get these lights in. The unfortunate thing is the bidder that did bid, that properly, also bid his number of days at three hundred and sixty. It's about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty days of work. The way our contract reads is, the work's gotta be continuous, so we hope that, that, that it's not a problem. Once he starts, that it's continuous work and it doesn't take much longer than a hundred and eighty days. But, and under our contract, they, once it's awarded, they, we can issue the notice to proceed no later than sixty days from the award. So we're hoping we can get it within the sixty plus a hundred and eighty, but the contract does read three hundred and sixty.
Any other questions? Any other members?
I, I just wanted to know, 'cause I, I was trying to remember earlier, this has been in the works for quite a while. Is this, do you remember how long it's been? Has it been over a year or several years? 'Cause I do remember the issue coming up, but I, I, I can't tie it to exactly when it was. If you know, it's fine if you don't, 'cause I don't remember either.
Talking to Chris Marsh, our engineer, and Lou Recio was, this came, this issue came up, we've had a lot of problems with the lights, and that's what led us to saying, okay, what do we need to do to upgrade them and redo them? And, and then it became much bigger of, of a project. Instead of just replacing the heads, it became a whole circuits and, and, and electrical. And that, that we were dealing with last summer.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number two.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? We have no polls. Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda item number two was approved five-zero. With that, we'll move to the regular agenda. A regular agenda item R one is a public hearing to consider application two-two dash one-one-three, an application by Jess Santa Maria and Elizabeth Leon, and adoption of resolution number two-three dash two-one confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking a special exception use approval to allow for a state licensed massage therapist establishment within a general commercial zoning district for a property located at eight seventy-five Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. This is a quasi-traditional item, so we need to have folks who want it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Is the applicant present? Ray, do you see them online?
I do not see them online.
Was there any communication, Bradford, with your office about their appearance?
They did not indicate that they would not be here this evening.
So, Mr. Mayor, with that, if you'd like, given the applicant is not here, this could be set for time certain at your next public hearing. Given the nature of the application, I expect there'll be questions, so with their absence here tonight, you may wanna set it for time certain.
Yes, I, I have no problem with doing a time certain. Would it be appropriate to do it for our next council meeting? You believe so? Yes? All right, the only other comment I have, and this is nothing you have to respond to now, but you can take this and consider, we've had these kind of requests over the years, right? Am I correct in that?
Correct, yes, sir.
And I believe we've, we've come up with some special conditions that we always, always wanted in place. Have we, have we applied that to this?
Yes, sir, we have.
Okay, we did? Okay, good. All right, so do we need a motion for that?
Yes, sir, if you could make a motion to set it for your next regular council meeting, which is August seventeenth at six thirty here in Village Hall.
I'll make a motion to set this agenda item R one to a time certain our next council meeting, should say August seventeenth at six thirty.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We have a motion and second on the paper.
Aye.
Any polls? We have no polls. I am let the record show that the motion carried five-zero to be, the time certain to reset this agenda item. Okay, agenda item R two is a public hearing for a first reading and approval of application number two-two dash six-three, and ordinance number one zero three-six, an application by Royal Palm Brewing Company amending the village code to amend section two-six dash seven-five dash point two and two-six dash eight-nine to eliminate the current prohibition in outdoor seating and pardon congregation directly adjacent to or budding to residential zoning districts to allow for permanent outdoor seating at. to allow for permanent outdoor seating at brewpubs, breweries, and microbreweries. Additional restrictions and increase, and increase the square footage limitation for brewpubs and microbreweries from 5,000 to 6,000, specifically requested for a property located at 543 North State Road 7, uh, Suite 103. This is a quasi judicial item. Who would like to be sworn in for this?
Is an applicant present here?
I do not see the applicant.
The applicant is not here?
Anybody online? Ray?
No.
Now, what happened? Did we get the wrong date out?
No, no, they've all been notified.
We've got the applicants for the...
The next one.
The next one, right. Okay.
So the same thing on this one, you could...
Well, no, I, I really don't, actually, um, I was gonna spend some time to talk about this, this particular item. Uh, first of all, I don't think it's appropriate for the council to act and ordinance taking away our ability to regulate where brewpubs and breweries are set up. I don't want them to, we do that by doing this. We arbitrarily give away the ability to regulate that, and who knows where they can set up in the future that's, uh, can, uh, conjunction with residential area. When I was, found out that that's what was happening, I kinda said, I don't think that's the way we should approach this. First of all, let me say this, that I am fully supportive, uh, that this particular, uh, brewpub continue to have their outdoor seating, all right? Just to give the history, what happened was, we all know we went through the COVID situation, and one of the things this council did was we wanted to do what we could to help the businesses, because, you know, they didn't want people to come inside, and the government didn't want people to come inside. We said, well, let's, let's come up with a temporary measure to let, uh, those, 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 uh, restaurants that wanted to use outdoor seating, where they could make that fit and work, we allowed them to do that. So this, this entity took advantage of that, and they had, they set up outdoor seating. And, uh, as it turns out, it was very successful in this way, that it has not been a hindrance or complaint whatsoever to the residents that are adjacent to it. So in my view, they have earned their right to ask for, uh, a waiver, uh, to continue with their outdoor seating. I don't think we need to, we should grant that waiver to them. We should not modify our rules and take away the ability for councils to regulate this going forward. Not just this council, but councils who will follow us. So my recommendation this evening was, and Mitty walked me through this, how we do this, is that we withdraw this immittal for a, a text amendment, because I don't, I don't think this text amendment will pass. And then they will not have the opportunity to continue with their outdoor seating. I would like us to make an amendment to the, to the, uh, ordinance that allows the council to receive a request for waiver, all right? On a case-by-case basis, so that a brewpub or brewery can demonstrate that they are not going to be, they are not a hindrance to their next-door neighbors, and we could do that on a case-by-case basis, but I don't think it's appropriate for us to take away our ability to regulate this going forward. Your comment?
Yeah, I, thank you. Um, so how you started this out was that they've earned the right based on previous...
They've demonstrated.
They've demonstrated, uh, this ability. So if we, if we continue that going forward, would another, uh, organization that wanted to do this would have to demonstrate that they were able to do this before they got granted?
No, we would handle that as we handle any request for, for a waiver to ordinances that we have in place. And our staff will put together the, the prerequisites that, on what that would be judged on and based on, as we handle any other ordinance. One of the things that I was, I remember slightly when this ordinance was put in place many years ago, and it was interesting that we decided not to have the door potentially open in, in requests for a waiver. So the way that, the way the ordinance was written is like, you, you can't even request a waiver. So the only approach that left the applicant was them to take the, 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 the ability to make a que, a request to the council to change the rules, or change, it's called a text amendment, but we're changing the rules essentially, all right? And the way this reads is we're taking away our ability as a council to regulate this going forward if we were to pass this.
I, I agree with you on that, because I didn't like that.
I don't think that's the approach.
The rule's not just for one, it's for everybody.
Exactly, and that would open it up, and we would have no control over it whatsoever.
Can I just make one, one clarification, um, and then just, the first clarification is, this is a zoning text amendment that's been requested by the applicant, so the applicant is entitled to have the application heard. Whether you do that tonight in their absence, or you postpone it to a time certain, this is what's before you. I do just want to make the comment that although it does make an amendment to the zoning code to allow outdoor seating that abuts residential, that is only by special exception approval. So there is a second step to come back to you with it, and this applicant has another application in the pipeline to come back and be the criteria.
And I want us to obviate that. I think it's totally unnecessary, and we don't need to do that. I, and I'm also gonna suggest we give the applicant back their money that they paid for this text amendment process, all right? As I said, I don't know how you all feel, but I have no problem with approving the waiver specifically with this establishment for them to continue to operate the way they've been operating with outdoor seating.
And just so the council's clear, that would also require a text amendment, because you can't...
I know it would require a text amendment. So I'm saying the amendment we should make to the ordinance should be that, to give us the option of hearing a request for the waiver, then being able to grant or not grant it.
I was, I was just gonna ask, did you have this conversation with the applicant at all? Can you enlighten us a little bit about how we wound up with this, rather than something like what the mayor described?
Well, yes, and the way that we evaluate uses that need a higher level of scrutiny, we've got a list of permitted uses that are by right. So if you have a shopping center, it's the list of uses that has been determined to be able to go in by right. Um, and then there's also a list of uses that are special exception uses, which require a little bit heightened scrutiny, right? And those are the types that go through the process. So our thinking was, is that this, um, outdoor seating adjacent to a residential property needed that higher level of scrutiny, that's why we put it in as a special exception.
Okay, and that, that rigor... You're gonna ask me?
No, I'm asking, does that answer your question?
No, well, it does, that answers my question. Uh, yes, I just wanted to kind of take it one step further.
Okay.
When we're talking about, um, providing a, a higher degree of scrutiny, what we're talking about is the usual 10 steps or 10 criteria.
Right.
For special exceptions, right? And it looks at, looks at things like the impact on the surrounding areas, everything from financially to noise, lighting, all that kind of stuff, right? So, so that's what you were suggesting, I guess, as this conversation...
That's what our thoughts were, I guess, correct.
Uh, just, just so that I understand, because I, I get these words mixed up, is this, would this be a waiver, or would it be a variance?
No, this is a changing the law. We're taking away, it's taking away our ability to regulate it.
No, no, what I'm asking is, um, the suggestion...
My suggestion, oh.
That would be a variance.
It's a variance?
Yeah, your landscape code is the only, chapter 15 is the only one that has a waiver provision. Every other zoning code is a, is a, is a variance.
Clear that up in my head, make sure I'm...
Let's get the right terminology.
So, um, okay, so I, I understand what was proposed then is a, a, uh, a, uh, special exception variance process that would have the rigor that normally happens.
It wouldn't be a special exception variance process. It would be a variance process. What we as staff were recommending was special exception process that had a review criteria. A variance has a different review criteria, and that may be a little bit more stringent and harder to meet, given you the opportunity to evaluate it under the variance criteria.
One, one other thing just for the council to consider, the difference between a variance and a special exception is a variance runs with the land. So once that's, once a variance is granted, it's granted in perpetuity, as opposed to a special exception, which is specific to the use. So if the special exception use is granted and that use ceases at that location, the special exception approval goes away.
So it doesn't convey with the...
It doesn't go on in perpetuity, correct?
Business. All right, so there's some advantages there, and we do have some control over that, because if we find that, that, um, it will be a noise nuisance, if we find that it will be a light nuisance, whatever kind of a thing, that is addressed under special exceptions, right?
Special exceptions and the variance criteria. I actually have the slides of those, if you want to take a look at them.
Which ones?
Uh, the variance criteria and the special exception criteria, if you wanted to see which ones you like best.
My question is, we, we have an application before us for X, and it seems to me the mayor is proposing Y. Are we able to go and say, oh, well, we're not gonna do X, which is what the applicant is asking for, and do Y, which is something they're not asking for tonight?
That would, that would need to be a conversation with the applicant. The application that you have before you tonight is... Right, they're not here, but you have a, a paper record, you have them having addressed the special exception criteria. It's typically customary to postpone to a time certain, so they can be here to answer questions and, and provide verbal testimony, but...
Wait, wait, just wait a minute. You know, let me cut, I'm gonna say this again. We have before us an up-and-down vote to take away our ability to regulate something going forward. That is what I'm talking about. The applicant only wants to get clearance for them to continue to have their outdoor seating, all right? They were told the only way to do that, because of the way the ordinance was written, was to request a text amendment. Is that true or not true?
Text amendment to allow for a special, special exception for outdoor seating.
Takes away the authority of this council to regulate it going forward. That's the point I'm trying to make here. I'm not trying to deny the opportunity for this, this establishment to have their continued operation of outdoor seating. I fully support that, but I do not support, and I do, do not think we should be giving away our ability to regulate that for our citizens going forward.
May I, real quick? Uh, so what I'm hearing is that your understanding of what the applicant wants, you're willing to...
They want to continue to do, yeah.
Correct, and then from Mitty, is it from a legal perspective, is, is that we were, and even what Councilman Valentin's brought up, is that we have in front of us what we think the applicant's intentions are requesting, and without them being here. So I don't think, I understand what the mayor is saying, and, um, I would like to hear more of that, but I think from Mitty's perspective, is it that we should wait till the applicant is here, so that we're all on the same page and do it then?
We don't have to wait for the applicant to be here. We know what the applicant wants. They want to be able to keep their outdoor seating.
Right, but if we go off of this...
They were told to follow this path. They didn't come to us and say, oh, we wanted, they were told the only way they can get in front of us to question this was to go to, to apply for a text amendment.
I, I understand that.
I don't know that. I don't know that, because variance criteria is different than a special exception criteria.
You told me we didn't have an option to provide variances the way the ordinance is currently written.
The way it's currently written, you cannot, you cannot get a variance.
That's my point.
Okay, what you're, what you're saying is the text amendment should take that restriction away. So to take that restriction, restriction away, then what you're saying is you're telling, you're wanting them to apply for a variance to get this use. Is that correct?
I'm not asking them to apply for anything else. I'm saying this is the action this council should take. Grant them the variance. We change our ordinance to say that we have, councils have the option of accepting and hearing a variance request, and we completely take out this, this right.
So, so if we, so if, if, if the direction, if this is voted down, and you give staff direction to change the code to allow variance of this section for outdoor seating, then we could go down that path.
But we don't have to vote on this.
But to say that what they want, I don't know that, because the criteria for variances is different than the criteria for special exception. A special exception criteria addresses the use, and the use would be outdoor seating. The variance addresses the uniqueness of the property and why, and, and you have to make decisions of that property being unique in that situation by its topography, by its location, by some geograph, geological function or something like that. It's so unique to other, all other properties in the village that it warrants giving it a variance. Now, we don't always look at the letter of the law of that.
I do.
But it's, but I, if I was the property owner, I'm not too sure I would want to rely on that, then, that, so I, I just don't want to speak for them that they would prefer that over this. That's all.
The vote, I think we take tonight is to say, grant them the variance, because that's actually what they were looking for.
Well, you can't grant variance tonight.
Wait a minute, hold it, hold it. Let me finish. The, 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 they did not wake up one morning and say, we want to change the law. They would, they would guide it as that is the only option they had. I'm saying, we, we would now give them the option to say, no, you don't need to do that, because I don't, no, they don't.
I would ask Mitty, ask Mitty, if this, if the variance is not allowed by the code, then how can we give them a variance if it's not allowed by the code?
That's why I'm saying it's a procedural thing. First of all, we have to...
It's a legal thing. We have to have it on the books to be able to do it, and if we don't have it...
I'm not disagreeing with you in what you're, your point. The process has to be is we amend the, the, the ordinance to give us that option. Then we exercise that option and approve it for this, this, this applicant. And I think we should refund them their money back, because they shouldn't have, we shouldn't be sitting here looking at a text amendment to change the law to take away options from the council.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna remove myself from the conversation, because I'm gonna say, is Bradford, do you know how many square feet that the current facility that they're in now is, the bay?
That's a different, that's...
Well, no, 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 wait, 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 because that's, that's why I'm gonna remove myself from the conversation. So what is the current square footage of their...
I, I don't know the exact square footage of, of their bay, but what I can tell you is that the second component of this ordinance request is to take the allowable square footage from 5,000 square feet and less to 6,000 square feet and less. So the current facility is less than five. I can tell you it's less than five.
It's less than five. So this is my thing, is there's language in here that is saying, and for future of what they may or may not do. So that is the reason why I'm going to remove myself from the conversation of, I don't want to continue with this without the applicant here. I understand completely what you're saying, and I, and I agree with what you're saying in the, the language, but that's the reason why I'm gonna, I will not vote on it.
But just, just to put in the context, that part of, that part of this text amendment change is saying we're expanding the opportunity for the size of brewpubs and breweries. That's what it's saying.
Can I address that? And I know why they want to go from 5,000 to 6,000. I know in, at, at Tullar Royale, we approved it at 6,000. They want to go, because they had, at one time, there was potentially an option for them to move into a different bay on that property, and it was 6,000 square feet. But when we pointed out to them that they can't do that without the code being changed, it put them in a very awkward position, because they couldn't sign for a lease and get any guarantees unless the code. So, so when they, when they decided to change for outdoor seating, they, they decided to, to change it to 6,000 and give them that option in the future.
Yeah, right.
To potentially move to a bigger bay.
Did Mr. Hill have something he might help us out with?
Mayor, I just wanted to add one point. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you, you, you're kind of mentioning that they have outdoor seating. They haven't enjoyed outdoor seating, this applicant, for over a year since we reached that point where...
Well, we shut it down.
Yeah, we shut it down. So I just wanted to clarify.
And, and real quick, since you're here, because I did have a question for you, is, because the comment that the mayor made earlier was that they have, um, been very good at the trial period, for lack of a better term. But I wanted to know who's responsible for, no, cleaning up, because I know their, their fellow renters were complaining because of ashtrays and garbage and things like that that were on the sidewalk. So is that the property manager, or is that the applicant?
We would, we would contact the property manager first.
Okay.
But we haven't had any complaints since then, and I can tell you personally, there hasn't even been a chair or a person standing outside using that facility.
No, this was all during, during COVID, when everybody was outside, uh, doing everything. So that was why I had a question.
So, Mr. Mayor, um, if, if the applicant were here, we could have this conversation. And, and maybe the idea of just treating this the same way we just treated the other one, which is postpone until a time certain.
I think, are we having consensus, and we just want to table this and time certain it and have the applicant here?
That's how I'd like to go.
That's fine. All right. We, we need a motion on that, Matt?
Yes, sir, thank you.
I make a motion for agenda item, regular agenda item R2 to be postponed to a time certain, which is our next council meeting, which I believe is August 17th at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Fair motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? We have no polls. Diane, let the record show the, uh, the time certain post moment was approved 5-0, okay?
Landscape.
Okay. Agenda item R3, is a public hearing to consider landscape waiver application number 23-041, an approval of order LW-23-03, an application by Frank Dianin, I hope I pronounced that right, Reed and Associates for consideration of three landscape waivers from section 15-131 sub B sub 1 to allow for a 20-foot landscape buffer where village code requires a 25-foot, uh, 25 feet. Two, section 15-131 sub B sub 2, to allow for a zero-foot berm within certain areas of the landscape buffers where village code requires a three-foot berm. And three, section 15-131 sub B sub 3, to allow for greater than 20-foot space of canopy trees within the west, west buffer where village code requires the canopy trees to be spaced a maximum of 20 feet on center. For a property located at 600 Business Parkway... For a property located at 600 Business Parkway, this too is a, is a quasi-dilettia process. Anyone who wants to speak needs to be sworn in.
Thank you. Can you jump on approach to podium and give your names for the record, please?
My name is Frank Bainham. Patrick Cunningham.
Thank you both. Can you raise your right hands for me and Bradford also again at the same time? Do you both, do you all swear from tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you all. I'll turn back to council for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
Village staff.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Um, the applicant is requesting a landscape waiver, approval for three landscape waivers for a property located at 600 Business Parkway. Waiver one is to section 15131B1 to allow for a 20-foot landscape buffer where village code requires 25 or 25 feet. A waiver of five feet within certain areas of the perimeter landscape buffer along the south property line. This buffer will contain all required landscaping material and three-foot high berm. This waiver is to accommodate and stabilize fire truck access. The landscape plan shows on this slide shows the five-foot encroachment of the stabilized five fire truck access into the perimeter landscape buffer along the south property line and it's highlighted in green. Staff is in support of this particular portion of the waiver request. Waiver number two is to section 15131B2 to allow for a zero-foot berm within certain areas of the landscape buffers where village code requires a three-foot berm. A waiver of three feet. The applicant is proposing to eliminate the three-foot berm within the areas along the perimeter landscape buffer along the west and north property lines and shown here on this slide. They, the berm is not required on the east property line. Um, the applicant contends that due to existing vegetation in the west and the north, landscape waiver has been requested to maintain the existing grades in some of the areas to not adversely impact the existing native vegetation and planted vegetation. Therefore, the berm would not be contiguous, but would extend to the greatest extent possible without impacting the native, native canopy. Waiver number three is to section 15131B3 to allow for greater than 20-foot spacing of canopy trees within the west buffer where village code requires canopy trees to be spaced at a maximum of 20 feet. The landscape, this landscape plan shows the location where the spacing of the trees will be greater than 20 feet. Um, this area is highlighted here in green. And the applicant contends due to existing, again, vegetation in the west buffer, landscape waiver has been requested to increase the spacing of the existing vegetation to 30 feet on center when combined with the proposed trees. Um, the proposed average spacing in the west buffer is 25 feet on center. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on June 27th, 2023 and recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. And staff is, is request, or staff is recommending approval of this application. And with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Bradford. Does the applicant like to make any comments?
I think I click right here. I.
No, I got, I got, I got it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I got it. There you go.
Do you show my screen? I minimize, I close this? My name is Patrick Cunningham and I'm the senior project manager for Redden Associates. Uh, with here, or with me here tonight is Frank Bainham and he's the agent for the applicant. Uh, the Royal Palm Beach Health and Rehabilitation Center is a 10.24 acre piece of property. It's right on the terminus of, of Business Parkway. And, um, it is surrounded, it well, to the north, west and south of the property. It is, let me click forward. I'm sorry. Uh, you'll see on the north, west and south, it is adjacent to residential and to the east is adjacent to industrial. Uh, what we're proposing later, and this is why we need the landscape buffers, is on the site plan approval, we're looking to expand the facility. Uh, an additional 15,000 plus square feet. Um, the landscape waivers, as, as were stated, waiver number one is really uh, the buffer on the south side of the property line to allow for a five-foot overlap. Uh, what we would typically, uh, how a landscape buffer would overlap an easement is what we're thinking. This is a 20-foot fire access to access the southwest portion of the building. And because of existing facilities, because of the existing dumpsters and storage tanks and underground storage tanks and existing vegetation in the area, we would like to shift the fire access to the south, uh, an additional five feet so that the fire trucks really have a straight shot, that they're not trying to weave in and out. And I know five feet is not weaving in and out, but these are million dollar machines. Straight shot's the best way to go. Um, what we're proposing is this fire access is just, um, it's stabilized so that we would cover it with sod and sod's a permitted, uh, permitted vegetation in the south buffer. But the rest of the buffer would maintain all the vegetation that's required in a typical buffer and would maintain the three-foot berm that's also typical, uh, or required. And you can see it's just kind of a five-foot overlap here. Um, and this is, this is the photographs of the location on the south property line. The residences have a six to seven-foot, uh, wood fence along that property line. The second waiver, uh, do we go all three at the same time or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the second waiver is for this three-foot berm. And if you went out to the site, um, there is existing vegetation, uh, significant existing vegetation on the north and west property lines. And if we put this required three-foot berm on the existing root system of these trees, it, the weight of these would hurt the trees, it'd be harmful for the trees. So what we're asking for is a waiver to just put the three-foot berm in areas that makes sense where there is no existing vegetation. Um, and it's really on the north property line, it's this little corner in the northeast corner. And on the west property line, um, I'm sorry, in the northeast corner, that's where we would not have a berm. That's where we were asking for no berm. And on the west property line, it's really the central part of the, uh, property line. And again, these, this is where significant existing vegetation occurs where the, the, uh, the canopy is tip to tip. And, um, these are 40-year-old trees in this area. So if we put a three-foot berm on there, it would be adversely impacting the, the existing vegetation. And you can kind of see this is, uh, uh, characteristic of the area. And then the third waiver would be the canopy trees on the west property line. Again, these are 40-year-old canopy trees. They are, the requirement is that the trees have to be 20 feet on center. When this was built in 1983 and 84, uh, the trees were clustered. They weren't, uh, uniform 20 feet on center and, and the most these trees are, the existing vegetation is 28.5 feet apart. So we just kind of rounded it up to 30 feet apart. And we're only talking about 30 feet for the existing vegetation. The proposed vegetation is put in at 20 feet on center. Um, and with the tree credits allowed for the existing vegetation, we do have the required amount of vegetation in there and it averages out to be about, uh, one tree for 25. Only asking for that for the west property line. And you can kind of see, I mean, again, uh, characteristic of that area. With that, that's, that's the waiver presentation and I can answer any questions that you have. And forgive me my glasses. I sat on them so they're. They're just kind of ominous right here.
I'm laughing with you because I know, I know the feeling.
Yeah, I, I walked in and I'm like, well, I'll only hold them on the side, so forgive me.
I can't see that far, so I didn't even.
Before we take comments from council, I'm gonna, we have any public comment in advance on this agenda item?
No, Mayor.
Anyone have their hand raised?
No, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Online?
No.
You'd have to raise your hand. We got you. I do have a comment card. Uh, Paul Conden, Condenson? I was right, see? It sounded okay. I told you it was, come on up, sir. That's okay. Come up here to, to the podium. Now, I just want to ask a question. You have down here, you, you want to comment on all three of these items. Do you want to just talk about all three of them now? You want to wait and go for each one? Go ahead. Okay. All right.
Um, for this one, like in the previous, uh, meeting, do I state my name and all that? And then after that, it starts?
Yes.
Okay. No, 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 it's, it's all good. Like I say, it's all new to me. Uh, my name is Paul Nudson. Uh, since 1985, I've lifted 1360 Donwood Lane in, uh, Counterpoint. So what else would you like from that? You got that. Um, agenda item R three. Regarding the waiver, number one, regarding the south property line and the fire truck access, I do agree that all land areas of this waiver should fully comply with properly engineered and constructed fire truck access and so forth. The root of this request is not based on the need for these deviations to be anything more than kind of a diversion, in my opinion, because I have looked at all this and studied it from the fact that the architect and developer are knowingly planning to construct the addition of this facility. Okay, so they're going to expand the facility westward and because of this, they are, they're not utilizing the property effectively where they could go north, south, which would not require so many of these waivers that they request. Now regarding waiver two, the east, west and north property line and not wanting the three-foot berm, as I mentioned previously, a properly considered and designed facility, in other words, the addition to the building done with respect to the existing codes and utilizing available land in the north, south orientation would not require the waiver. So properly designed, many of these waivers are, are not even needed. In regards to the tree spacing, um, this was brought up on the, the previous meeting. And I do agree with what was presented there because having lived there a long time, I know the trees are very old. And to remove them would be a foolish mistake. So in summary, there's about 50 residences that border within this 300-foot, um, area or whatever you want to call it, the limit where they sent out the notifications. So these are within Counterpoint and the Willows. And essentially you as the, the officers of the village, you know, the elected officers, you represent these people. And, you know, um, I, I truly hope that you will understand my point on this and others also. And, and just see that, you know, if they simply designed the building correctly, the waivers would not be required. You know, I've looked at these renderings that they've presented and in upcoming statements, um, we can discuss that even further. So, uh, please respect the citizens, you know, the 50 residences that border this place. The, the nursing home has been a great neighbor for a long time. I know that having lived there. Um, and we don't want that to change. I think that about covers it.
All right. Thank you. Whoa, right on time.
Wow. Perfect. Perfect time.
Okay, uh, before we get members, council comments, would you like to make any comments relating to the concerns that were raised?
Well, I, I do want to say that the three-foot berm is required in the code and it has nothing to do. I mean, we do want to expand the property and by expanding the property, we have to bring the code, bring it up to code. But the three-foot berm is required. And whether or not the building is oriented north, south or east, west, or the expansion is in the other corner. It, it's, we're just asking for this berm to be reduced where the existing vegetation occurs. And, and same with then with the fire access, we've been asked to provide fire access to the back portion of the property.
Sure.
And again, if, if it's the expansion that, uh, that instigated this or if the expansion still goes north, south, as, as the gentleman stated, we would still need fire access to the back portion.
Okay, comments?
I'll go real quick. Um, Mr. Cunningham, if you could put back up your second slide, please? And then I'm going to need Bradford for the rest. That one, with the, the otters, with the rendering on top. Perfect. Thanks. Okay, Bradford.
Yes.
Simplify for me, please. Waiver one with the five feet in the back, is that because that would be, I don't, oh, you have to use, you can't use a cursor there, can you?
No, but I, I can, he, he's, he's got, the previous, the next slides shows the locations of the five feet.
No, I know, but it, it's easier, well, for me, it's easier because that's the actual landscape. So, right, there we go. Thanks. Okay, so then it's the, they want to leave those trees, but they don't want to add, they want to put grass or sod on either side for a total of five feet, not five feet on one and five feet on the other, correct?
So what, what this is, is there is an encroachment of five feet of the drive aisle to get the stabilized fire access. It's part of that, that, you know, of course, we, we all know that those things are much wider than five feet. But they just needed five feet of the buffer, um, to provide for the, 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 the remaining portion of that fire access. And be quite honestly, you know, if they said that, that it's going to be stabilized sod, that's where sod would be anyway, on that side of the, you know.
Okay.
Landscape. It just has to be 25 feet exclusive of anything other than buffer area.
Okay, so then Mr. Cunningham, if you can use the cursor then, and then where are, where's the additional five feet going? Or where's the rear entrance for the fire trucks to enter and through?
They would enter from, well, as they come in Business Parkway.
Right.
They would turn, I'm not a fire.
That's okay. Yep.
There's another slide that shows it. Right here. So, um, it would come in here and go down on the corner and then turn right here and go straight. And then there's a T-bone that goes up here.
But then the five feet.
Is the yellow. It's the orange.
Okay, so it's the width, it's not the length.
No, it is the width.
It's the width. Okay. And then, um.
So much like, I'm, I'm sorry, forgive me, but it's much like a utility easement where that you, um, utility easements are allowed to encroach into landscape buffers, but no landscaping is allowed to be in the easement.
In, correct.
It would act in the same manner.
Okay, and then you're not removing the current trees and vegetation that are there?
The existing vegetation that's there that are exotics have to come out. But the native vegetation that is down, uh, on the southwest portion, we are not removing that.
And we don't have any encroachments on that easement.
On that easement. Well, okay, so that's a concern though that you have, is the width of it, correct?
The access to it and how it is presented in the proximity to the residences and therefore it brought forward, can I have him to come to the line below the record? Okay, you see the white area that they're showing?
Right.
Um, you see how close that is in proximity to the west property line?
Correct.
If the orientation of the design of the new construction were adequate and, uh, the extension were turned north, south, there'd be no issues with the fire trucks coming in on the north side, coming along the west side and then having access to probably the full width of the required code.
Okay. But I think Brett, oh, thanks, Randy. Sorry. Yeah.
Recorded.
So, yeah. So Bradford then, but is that physically possible?
To reorient the.
Correct. Cause it doesn't look like, yeah, it doesn't look like there's that much.
I don't know what the internal operations look like and if they're trying to kind of fit in with what's on the other side of the wall and that's how they're kind of making things work on the inside.
Okay.
Um, and then maybe ask how many times is a fire truck going to go down this road? Hopefully not many.
Right. Okay, that I just wanted to understand. And then the other two, and you can leave the slide up. So then the other two variances then are not to remove current, um, trees and landscape that's there. It's just so that they don't have to add what we would have imposed on that, correct? So leaving everything the way it is is what they're asking for.
On, so I think that, is it the third one that you're speaking of?
The second and third one.
Okay, so the, the second one is for the berm. So in, whenever these trees, these existing trees, um, get their root systems get covered with three feet of berm because it's got to have one, you know, three to one slope. So you're looking at, um, 18, 19 feet with a one-foot table on the top. So that covers a pretty big area in a root, root system.
Correct.
And so what they're asking for is where this root system and where they can, they will be placing that three-foot berm. but in the other areas, they're asking for relief.
Not to damage the correct, the current ones then?
And then the third one is to, where the mature trees occur, there's spacing sometimes of thirty feet on, off-center, or twenty-five is required. So what they're proposing is, is to where it makes sense to kind of offset that thirty feet, plant a tree to where you have, what was it, the offset on that one, that was?
It was up to thirty, twenty-five feet, right. But you're not removing any of the current trees, correct?
The existing exotics have to be removed.
Okay, that, yeah, the main, right.
I'm sorry, they're supposed to be twenty feet off-center, there are some that are thirty, but they want to come in and put them in the middle and try to offset some where they can.
Okay, got you.
And to add to the piggyback on that is that if these trees are thirty feet on center, to put a tree underneath this canopy,
Right.
that'll be a buggy whip. I mean, it won't do well.
Well, exactly.
It's an attempt to minimize the waiver request.
Thank you.
I like that.
Thank you, that's what I needed, was clarification on those three, thanks.
Other people's money is from that movie, right?
There it is.
Good.
So, everybody, so the concern here really is twofold in my head. One is the proximity of the extension to homes. That's your concern, right? If it's done the way, okay, one of them. From your point of view, someone mentioned, from an operational point of view, you put that there for a reason. Can you talk a little bit about the impact of doing it?
We have to get to that side of the building, in the back of the building. There's only one way to really do it, is from the south side.
So, so what I'm looking at is, trying to get myself, I've been there a number of times, so I'm just trying to kind of figure out, where the heck am I?
No, thank you.
So, if I drive straight in off a business parkway, I'm at the side of the building, not near the front entrance, is that correct? Just trying to get oriented.
Well, the existing building, the front, is in, on the east side.
I'd have to make a left, I'm driving in, I'd have to make a left to get to the front. Otherwise, I'd drive right into a parking lot.
Right.
So I do know where it is. All right, great. And so you positioned it, the extension, in a way that would not destroy the parking lot. Tell me why you positioned it there. I'm just trying to figure that out.
It's the easiest access, because the fire truck would come in, take a left.
No, 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 it's not a fire truck thing, it's an operation thing.
Facility itself. We're not the architects, the architects are the ones that kind of drove the placement of where that building is, so obviously, there are internal hallways that work east-west, and so when they added this facility, they wanted to connect to those corridors in the building. So they felt like that was the best position to put the building. If you put it to the north, you know, number one, there's not enough room between you and the lake that's there, and you're cutting off half of your parking, so then how do you get to your parking for the facility? You either have to move your lake, which, you start filling lakes, it's a whole lot of dirt that keeps disappearing.
Okay, that helps, that helps.
The retention point.
This was obviously the best place.
Just trying to understand what the rationale was for putting it there, given the concern about the proximity to the homes.
And I do want to point out that our setbacks for this proposed facility that we're not supposed to be talking about yet are, on that side, which is the closest to a property line, is 1.6, which required, more than one and a half times the required setback. The south were, I think were, what were we, two and a half times, and on the north were eleven times the required setback. So, we're not getting close to the property lines, and, you know, not anywhere as close as we could, so I think we should be rewarded for that, more than anything else.
Okay, I understand I'm beyond the scope of that single item, that's fine, but out of context, it doesn't make a lot of sense, so, even though we have to approach it that way, to get the waiver, I mean.
Yeah, you had a question?
Why don't you come up and use a mic, or, yeah, there you go.
Thank you, but give that to you. Working, okay. So, my question is, they're requesting this solidified, you know, passageway for the fire trucks as part of the improvement with the expansion of the building. The portion of the building where they want to run the fire trucks along the south side is along the existing building as it is right now. So, with their statements, what is the actual path for a fire truck to get to the south side of the building as it is this very day? There's, apparently, there's nothing improved there. So why does it need to be improved? Or is it because of this, this new addition is going to block that type of access?
Mayor. I can't speak for, I'm speaking for the fire department, but my guess, from looking at this site plan, is they want, because it doesn't matter where that building's to the north or to the west, they want access around the building. And, and they would want this, this, on the south side of the building, just to get to the south side of the existing building. So, that giving it to them on the south side gives them access all the way around the building.
That's what I heard individually, but, yeah.
So where, wherever the addition went, and there, it looks like there's logic for the addition going there. It's connected to the existing building, not separated by the roadway going in, and not being in the pond, and not taking a significant, retention pond, and not taking a significant amount of landscaping out to the north to put it there.
Okay.
I'm sure these were considerations when we went through the site plan approval process. Okay. Still, you finished that?
Yeah.
I think, looking at it, I don't see, Bradford, that there's a lot of change to the current landscape.
There is, there is additions to the current landscaping, where maybe some of the landscaping.
If you look at the slide right now, I think we'll kind of point this out.
Sure, go ahead.
So every tree on the site that you see right now, that's in a dark green color, is new additional landscaping.
Okay.
The lighter trees, which is that west buffer, and some selected trees elsewhere, are existing native vegetation that's staying. So, there's a lot more vegetation on the site now, but it's all invasive. So we're going to be removing that per code by requirement, because we're making this addition to the facility, and putting quite a bit of new vegetation into the site.
Thank you.
Okay, no further comments from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item R3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the paper.
Aye.
Any opposed? If there's no opposed, Dan, let the record show, agenda item R3 was approved 5-0. Okay, now we'll move on to agenda item R4, which is a public hearing to consider application number 23-042 and approval of variance order VC-23-03. An application by Frank Bam of Region Associates requesting a variance from section 2693 sub 4 sub H to eliminate the required eight-foot-high masonry wall along the north, south, and west property lines for a property located at 600 Business Parkway. Did they swear for all three?
Yep, they've been sworn for all three. If the council's ex parte disclosures are the same for all three, I don't need any more, but if there are any more, let me know. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor. The applicant has requested a variance from section 2693-4H to allow for the elimination of the required eight-foot masonry wall along the north, south, and west property lines for a property located at 600 Business Parkway. Village code section 2693-4H requires that any development parcel zoned industrial general, which is important, as I go through my slides here, which is adjacent to property zone residential, install an eight-foot-high masonry wall per village standards along the property line. The area highlighted in green is an illustration of the landscape plan, showing the locations where the wall will be eliminated. The applicant contends, due to the nature of the existing proposed use and the fact that this use has been in business for almost forty years without a wall, a zoning variance has been requested to eliminate the required wall. Village code section 2632-F6 allows the village council to grant variances when special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, does not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation of the provisions of this division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties, and that the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land, building, or structure will be in harmony with the general intent, purpose of this division, will not be injurious to the area involved, detrimental to the public welfare. Yeah, I hope not. Village staff is not in support of this variance, because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands. Granting the variance will confer on the applicant special privileges that are denied to other lands. The literal interpretation of the code does not deprive the applicant of rights enjoyed by other lands in the same zoning district, and is not the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of this application. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on June 27th and recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. And what I wanted to mention is, is that whenever I was leading into this application, so one of the things that you may want to consider, whenever evaluating this particular application, although this, this property is zoned industrial general, and is adjacent to a residentially zoned piece of property, you are required to have a masonry wall along the property lines for industrial general to residential. That is for, think of your industrial general uses along Business Parkway. If this particular use was in a different zoning district, other than the industrial general and adjacent to residential, that masonry wall will not be required. It's, I believe it's fencing from the, from the property owners. And with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. I just wanted to throw that out there and give you that different perspective on.
So the point you're making is that this particular use that happens to be in an industrial general zoning is kind of incongruous?
No, it's the zoning district adjacent to the residential that requires a masonry wall. The particular use in any other zoning district would not require it.
Okay.
For example, I can give you a personal example.
Let's say your personal, I think I know what I'm about to do.
The assisted living facility that is right next door to my neighborhood, which is a residential neighborhood, it is not in an industrial place, it is MXD, I think, is the thing, and there is no eight-foot wall.
No wall. Well, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but with that, the applicant would like to make comments.
Sure. How do I start with my presentation?
You know where, you know where it says that, right?
A little more significant.
No, Joe.
Do I need to be sworn in again, or?
No, sir, you're good.
Again, Patrick Cunningham for the applicant. This property was a, considered a convalescent home, a nursing convalescent home in 1983, and it was a permitted right in the industrial zoning district. And it went through various site plan approvals in the next decade, in 1993, which is what you see in front of you, the existing facility, and no changes have been made since 1993. Now, in 2015, the village took out nursing care convalescent definition, totally took it out of the code, and created a senior housing facility definition, and that senior housing facility required a special exception use, and it did not include the industrial general zoning district. So this became, to no fault of the facility, a non-conforming use.
Non-conform use, yeah.
And so, you know, we, they, we, I'm not part of it, but they have operated since 1983. They've operated for thirty-eight years, and for thirty-two of them, they operated as a permitted use. And now, six years after that, they wanted to expand it, you know, the change in market, the change in use, they wanted to expand the facility, and they couldn't do it. And so that's when there was a zoning text amendment offered or requested last year, and to allow for a senior housing facility in the industrial district so they could expand. Now, in the industrial district, only when it attached to a resident or adjacent to a residential, it says that you need a landscaped eight-foot masonry wall adjacent to the property when they're adjacent to residential. Most of the industrial pieces in, in this Business Parkway, we're talking, they're a hundred feet wide, you know, they're a hundred and fifty feet wide. And so their attachment to a residential, a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet, so the wall that they make, if they came in for site plan approval, would only be a hundred feet. And so the, the impact of the environment at that location is minimal. And I mention this because this piece of property has two thousand feet adjacent to residential. So when you put this eight-foot concrete masonry wall on the property line, in addition to the required three-foot landscape berm and the hedge and landscaping, all in the landscape buffer, because it really, they take up the same real estate, you begin to put a heck of a lot of impact on the adjacent neighbors. Now, I know the purpose of the concrete masonry wall is to protect the residences from, from adverse impacts. A wastewater treatment facility, a funeral home cremation facility, an RV boat storage facility, auto repair. And, and as was mentioned earlier, this is a residential use. These are residences, it's a commercial use, but they're residences, people live here full-time, they, and, and when they pass away, they go. I mean, it's kind of, it's a nursing facility. And so the actual use is not what is intent of the eight-foot concrete wall. There is no outdoor activity, there's no visual blight, there is no vibrations and sounds and noises, or noises and sounds, same thing, or, or smells that are associated with industrial uses that would adversely impact the residents. Now, on top of that, we have a lot of existing vegetation there. If we're putting a concrete masonry wall with the existing vegetation, that also creates a, a impact to the environment. And then what you're doing is, is you would, I would think, as just a layman, if I lived on the south portion of the property, I'm assuming that the, along the south property is a six-foot, seven-foot fence. Most of, or all of those residents have a fence. And so they're either keeping pets or children in, or having, trying to have some privacy of their own, or blocking the view. But on the west property line, there are no six-foot fences, they're chain link fences and stuff, and I would think that they're, they're looking at the view of the property, and same with the north side. Now, the facility itself, Frank mentioned this earlier, the facility itself is permitted to have a thirty-foot setback on the south, and a thirty-foot setback on the north, and a thirty-five-foot setback on the west. The west boundary, we're getting the closest, we're going down to, or we're going up to fifty-five feet, but that's still one and a half times what the permitted setback is. In the south, we're two and a half times what the permitted setback is, and in the north, it's eleven times. It's a football field. It's more than a football field to the facility.
So, you, by, the point you're making here is that because of the additional setbacks, this really makes it a moot point?
Well, yeah, it makes it a moot point. It's not just the visual setbacks, but it's also the use itself. The use, there is no outdoor use, there is no outdoor activity here.
I have a question. Exactly, what additional services are the expanded facility going to be providing?
It's short-term surgical rehabilitation.
So, we have, okay. Okay. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. And I can, you know, I can answer any questions that you have regarding this, but this is essentially what we're talking about. Is that we, to avoid putting the wall where the existing vegetation is. Is that we to avoid putting the wall where the existing vegetation is, the green here shows where the berm is, and that's where a wall would go as well.
So you're saying the wall would do away with the vegetation?
No, we still have that.
You still have, so you have like a double?
A double.
Deal, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and so the wall, the wall doesn't sit on top of the berm.
No, but it creates.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
A wall berm and you got the vegetation.
Right, it's not and it's a suggestion.
Lot of separation.
It's not even a retaining wall where that it would berm up to the wall. It's the berm, it goes up and goes back down, and then there's another wall.
Okay. Uh, if you're finished, I'd like to find.
I'm finished. I can answer any questions.
Diane, we have any advance uh public comments on this agenda item? No advance. Okay. Right, any hands raised? Okay, we have a comment caught. Mr. Nutson, you want to come back up?
Again, Paul Nutson, thirteen sixty Donwoods Lane, Counterpoint. Regarding agenda item R four, the waiver of the eight foot wall. The applicant contending the facility's ability to operate with the required eight foot wall for forty years is kind of distorted in an error. Here's why. During those previous forty years, the facility of the current size is smaller and has a footprint on the property that is just not there. And was not anywhere near as close to the approximately fifty residences of Counterpoint in the Willows. Over the forty years, and I agree, the existing facility overall has been a great neighbor. And bear in mind, much of this was done before we were incorporated into Royal Palm Beach, so these things are on to Palm Beach County. The new construction addition of the facility entirely to the west places the new construct at fifty two feet, he stated fifty five, I heard fifty two the previous meeting. From the existing property line to the Counterpoint residences. Fifty two feet, to give you an idea, is just slightly more than the length of two single family home car garages. So not very far at all. In regards to the project plan as shown in other documents provided by the developer and their agents. They fail to emphasize that there is an outdoor recreation area that extends even further westward than the building towards these Counterpoint residences. The Counterpoint residences, backyards are fairly small in this area. And with that, this commercial facility will essentially be approximately fifty feet. The building will be fifty, uh, I'm sorry, will be fifty feet from the back door of these homes, so very, very close. Simply too close, except in maybe a zero lot line construction of residences, but not commercial properties. Uh, myself, I agree with all points made by the village staff previously, not in support of this variance. And I was disappointed to find that the recent persons that voted on it allowed us to go through as a four point oh uh or four to zero. To be entirely in error and not in the best interest of the the residents of the village. Again, the developer, he's kind of working a show game here, folks, in my opinion. He's showing me one thing while they're deviating away from another. Um, it I just, I don't like it. It's a it's a bait and switch, in my opinion. And in the most simple terms, if the developer employed architects had properly designed this new construction addition to the facility on the available land. The wall would easily be accommodated on the property and the local residents would be accepting what you folks are going to present. The village officers for accomplishing their roles, representing the people of the village without these variances. Now, bear in mind, he puts up his graphics and so forth. To the north, you have a parking lot and a retention pond. So the folks in the Willows have a huge buffer. The residences in Counterpoint have far less, especially on the west side, the way that this development is going to expand. Including the rendering that shows the outdoor recreation area, they say is not going to be unified.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Trying to make sure I'm giving this. So I guess I guess my question. Have we received any feedback from any of the residents surrounding this this community regarding this wall?
No, sir.
Yeah, we know we know you, we know about, but no other residents have have indicated there any concerns about this?
Nope.
And everybody was notified by our mail about this, that what was coming.
Very diligent about that.
Okay. Um, all right.
Not a single person that actually lives adjacent to.
All right, that's 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 interesting. Well, comments from members of council, go ahead.
Um, I have a question for the applicant. If I and I didn't see it if or if I did see it, um, I didn't acknowledge it or recognize it. Um, do you have a photo of what it would be if you had? Because I'm trying to understand if the wall goes in or the what's required under the code is the wall. What happens with all of the landscaping that you're required to do? Uh, and and basically what I'm getting at is, okay, are you going to have a wall and then trees behind the wall? Are you going to have trees? You're going to have trees and then a wall behind the trees? Or or is the wall going to kind of supplant some of the trees?
Our goal is to not have the walls. We have this landscaping. If we had to put the wall in, we have to figure that all out.
Okay.
It's not a simple thing because of the existing vegetation in sight and the vegetation that were required.
If they were to construct a wall along there, it would, they'd have to set it a little bit off the property line for maintenance. So let's say a foot. And then it then they'd have to have a at least a two foot footer. And then they would have to have room to build it, so and then they'd have to go at least a couple of feet down into the down in the ground. So they would be cutting the roots all the way along that property line on that that side of the trees. And then removing anything within probably five to eight feet of the property line.
So the and.
And and removing everything underground and all the root system that was going that way. It would not be safe for the trees. It would not, it 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 would be. It it would, it would be catastrophe to the landscape.
But from from what the Mr. Newton's point of view, if if you're looking at the property and you live on the west side. And you're looking at what I'm trying to get at is, okay, is he going to be looking at a wall with trees behind it? Or is he going to be looking at trees with a wall behind it? Because my thought is, I I mean, I would much rather look at the trees. But if residents would rather look at a wall, I mean.
Where was the the wooden fence? I thought, to your point though, I thought the wooden fence on the Counterpoint side was their backyard.
The the people have have wood fences in their own backyard. Each individual homeowner did that, correct?
South side of the property.
Okay.
Oh, south side.
Not the west side.
The west side is almost a hundred percent chain link or nothing.
Gotcha.
Okay.
North side is primarily chain link or nothing.
And to answer your first question is, the wall doesn't negate the required vegetation.
It doesn't require, but I get I I guess.
But what I mean is, is that the required landscape buffer still has to have all the required landscaping.
Right.
And then the wall is added to it. The wa- by putting in a wall, we don't, we still have all the proposed landscaping required. And so part of the landscape buffer is is where we don't have a berm. We were putting in a double hedge row of vegetation that could potentially grow to be six feet, seven feet tall of the species used.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question about a couple of things. Um, is there, don't, does the facility have its own fence now?
The only fence they have is around the pond.
Okay. Okay, and I've heard you've been great neighbors. And so in this past however many years, has there been any police called? Have there been incidents? Have there been? Ha- has there been a problem? And so. I'm curi- I'm curious if there's been a really good relationship and the resident, I want to ask about the recreation area that he brought up.
It's an outdoor patio that is enclosed with an opaque fence.
So who gets to who gets to enjoy that outdoor patio?
That's the people that are in the short term rehabilitation. If they want to go outside and smoke a cigarette or whatever, that's probably what's.
Short term rehabilitation, so not your nursing home patients.
I mean, yeah, they, there's already courtyards built into the building that are adjacent to those spaces. I'm sure they would keep this separated from.
Yeah.
The skilled.
Sorry. So back to my question. If there's been a good relationship. Could what what what's the problem with not having the wall? Do you anticipate a problem going forward? I'm curious.
Is it? Okay, I I you can't really testify in behalf of someone else. They're not here to speak for themselves and. Okay. Okay.
Sure.
If I can ask the applicant, um, one more question. You alluded to it because I know it's not completely the way they do it. But the one that was designed close to my neighborhood as far as, you know, walking or outdoor activities where the residents can go. It's it's pretty much all self-contained, although some people do get out and to walk through the neighborhood. It seems whenever I see them, they're always with an aide. Is that something similar here? Because.
This is skilled nursing, which is kind of.
Okay, the higher level of stuff. Okay, thank you.
There will obviously be the new facility, which is just twenty rooms. Those people are going to have them up, walking around on their knees and new hips and things like that. It could be that those people can walk around, but they're.
So so if I understand then what the concern is, it's about what we keep repeating, which is that the ex- extension is going to be really close to several backyards. The building right now is not really close to those backyards. So the visual barrier and that kind of thing is not that big a deal. In fact, it's okay the way it is right now, pretty much, with the exception of the maintenance issue. It's all about the building, the extension. It's all about the extension, if I'm reading this correctly. I'm sorry.
The building is just one.
Okay, that's 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 a good observation as well, because it'd be hard to see.
Prophet, is it possible to just do the wall where it's as closest to the the neighbor's backyard and then do the other places where we got a lot of buffer there? Is that an option we could consider?
There would be, there would need an evaluation of that. I I cannot give you a definitive answer tonight. Yes, sir. And, you know.
You can, guys can consider it. What he doesn't know is what impact it would have on the landscaping that's right there where you're talking about building the wall.
Sure.
But you can consider not giving the waiver for that portion adjacent to the new building. We just can't tell you what in what impact that would have on the existing landscaping.
And.
You have a six foot fence around that courtyard, the patio that's on the end of the building.
So so the architecture, the architecture, the way it extends out, it extends out at its narrowest point. So it has the least amount of impact. It's not rotated and extended out on its fat side. It's on its thin side. And a good portion of that extension has a six foot fence that an opaque six foot fence that surrounds the courtyard. This eight foot masonry wall that's required by code is required by code on the property line. And so when it's on the property line, that's where it impacts all that vegetation.
If I may, I I understand the concern for the residents on the west side. That is my concern because it is so close. I like at least that there is a fence around the outdoor area, so that would abate some of the noise that's there. Uh, is it possible to add, would it be possible to add additional landscaping to help in that section right there? So that there was more blockage, either canopy trees. You are adding significantly more so that it would help with that, because then that's going to help with the noise, that's going to help with the visual sight, that's going to help with um the concerns that they have there. Because I was thinking about the fire trucks. They make a lot of noise and especially at night when they start reverbing off of buildings. That was my concern about how close they are there. Yes, sir.
Um, maybe, this is this is my thought, my me thinking out loud here, and they had touched upon it briefly. But in those areas where the extent where the addition is adjacent to those properties to the west. Maybe a condition of approval along the lines of, or maybe even a swapping of a material into calusias to where it's maintained at eight feet or higher.
Then we could do a a living wall.
Right.
That would then go up.
And then you're not having to, wow.
Every once in a while, a blind squirrel finds a nut.
So that we could do that as a condition of approval?
Thanks, thank you.
If if the applicant would agree to that.
Well, the advocacy, they would have to agree otherwise.
We already have calusia along that edge.
Okay, so. Oh, yeah. If you did, I believe that it's the same material around our.
Somebody be clear that we're going to come out and measure the height. So it's got to really do that.
I think they're expecting four feet planted, which is.
But I think in our code that we allow the the living walls to be eight feet, not like the chain link fences that are six feet. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's why, so if that's something then that is addition additional.
Provide the living wall buffer.
So taking a a different what if approach here, and I think we touched on it kind of briefly. So instead of a landscaping in that area, a wall. I mean, I heard the concern about, well, that stuff won't grow. We put the wall there. Okay, great. If a major concern is is a visual, the need for a visual barrier, and we've we've done this a couple of times in different developments. Then one possibility would be just require the wall to be put there, unless I'm missing something.
Think then you still then run into the problem. Of accommodating the required the the footers for the wall. Intruding into the uh root system in that area and affecting those trees. Where the the hedge material will grow with the root system that is there currently.
I understand that. I'm just saying, if if you took a dramatically different approach, you put the wall in. Don't worry about the bed. You're not looking for landscaping there. You got a wall. If the main concern is the the view, you're looking for a solid visual barrier. We have done something along that line, if I remember correctly, and and it's a possibility. I mean, I'm just putting an idea out there to see if, I'm I actually like the living wall idea better. I mean, if that would would work, but if.
So I don't think we have the residents that would be affected with the wall or landscaping here tonight, I don't think.
I would agree with you, Ray.
We don't, you're not one of the residents that's that's affected by the area they're talking about a a wall, a a block wall or a living wall, right? Okay, okay.
So that would provide the visual barrier then. Um, and you have, you got one person.
I was going to say, I just want to might put some context here. Over the years, we've experienced when we've had items that come before this council that are concerned to our citizens, they show up. This room, we've had situations where this room was standing room only packed, okay? That is not the case tonight, sir. I appreciate you coming here and I appreciate your your presentations and information and perspectives. But I don't see the the outcry from our citizens coming in here to tell us that this is not something they want to see happen. And that is just my observation and hoping that you all think about that as well.
I agree with you, Mayor. I I would go back to this item and just say if we can do that with the. I, I would go back to this item and just say if we can do that with the, uh, addition of the living wall, the eight-foot fold, because then it, it is completely blocked, it is taller.
Uh. Go ahead.
So, no, I, I, that, that sounds fine, like I said, I wouldn't oppose the idea.
You can see that as a concept, yeah. Well, then, oh.
Forgive me though, can this be attached as a conditional approval then? And where you, you say, okay, it's a conditional approval is that there's an eight-foot living wall for eight feet or?
Well, I think we're talking about the west side, right?
The, the west side.
Where the closest, yeah.
The entire west side or just closest to the building?
I.
Bradford, define, you'll have to define that for us exactly what, where that would be.
Right, um, I would re, I'm, I'm gonna respectfully defer to Midi. Um, I, I know that in the past, she hasn't felt really good about conditioning variances, but we certainly can condition the site plan.
Yep, that would exactly be my recommendation. So that, whether the living wall gets put in or not, the variance, the elimination of the masonry wall still has to be granted. So you can, the landscape plans are approved as part of the next application, the site plan application, so that would be the proper place for that condition.
And then add that there then, okay, gotcha.
Uh, does someone, can someone put into a motion?
Yeah, because we just, all we're, we'd do is theoretically is just approve, so I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number four.
Which eliminates the wall, but we will address it.
In five.
Okay.
Second.
Reverend, is everybody clear, we're clearing it? Is that motion okay, Midi? Okay. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, we have one opposed? We have one opposed. Diane, let the, let the record show that agenda item R four was approved four one. Thank you. Okay, now we're getting into agenda item R one, uh, R five. It's a public hearing to consider application number two-two dash one-two-six. An application by Frank Bram and Reed Associates in adoption, adoption of resolution number two-three dash two-zero confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking a site plan modification, special exception, and architectural approval to allow for construction of a fifteen thousand, two hundred ninety-foot square foot expansion of an existing senior housing facility located at six hundred Business Parkway. And everybody is sworn in already?
They're all sworn and you've given your expertise, so you're good.
None, okay.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, the applicant is requesting a site plan modification approval, um, for upgrades to the site, including construction of approximately fifteen thousand, two hundred ninety-one square foot expansion of the existing senior housing facility to add twenty beds to the existing one hundred and twenty bed facility. Special exception use approval to allow for a senior housing facility within the industrial general zoning district. And architectural approval for exterior updates, including paint, new metal roof doors and screen walls and courtyard improvements. Um, once again, the property is located at six hundred Business Parkway. The applicant is also requesting architectural aesthetic review for the building addition and the landscape plan. We went over the history, um, as far as what has brought us here today. Current the senior housing facility is located in the industrial general zoning district and is considered a legal non-conforming use. And the applicant would like to expand the existing senior housing facility. And in order to do this, they need to have the special exception approval. Overall, the proposed site plan is a special exception and architectural meet the village's requirements for this type of a use within the industrial general zoning district in regards to parcel size, parcel width setbacks, purview area, maximum building height, with the exceptions of landscape waiver and the variance request. This is the site plan, we've kind of gone over this, um, already. You can see there outlined in red is the addition, and just north of that is a new and reconfigured parking lot to accommodate the expansion. Um, here is the landscape plan that, um, we have gone over already. And again, the landscape plan. And here is the architectural renderings of the property. These are the criteria for granting special exceptions, we've been over these many times, so I, I won't go over those, um, tonight unless anybody has, would like to hear them again. Um, again, the special exception criteria. And the planning's only commission considered this application on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three and recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. And staff is recommending approval of this application and given the, um, discussions on the prior, um, agenda item, we would recommend that the, that condition of approval, that the calusia hedge along the west property line, if you look at your, uh, can look at your screen here. Maybe proposing from this property down to this property, and open for discussion on that. Um, and with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. Comments from the applicant?
Okay, I need. Send back to me.
I am, I am, I am. There you go.
Thank you. Again, for the applicant, Patrick Cunningham. Um, we have gone through the site plan, uh, a couple of times through the discussion of the last two. But, uh, I, what I would like to show is that, um, and my cursor is hitting it right now, is right now the parking lot comes in here and kind of dead ends. So with this addition in the back, the, the driveway would come by and we've actually made it easier for circumnavigate that, the property. Along with the review process, um, this is the old, the original landscape plan, the original site plan. But along with the review process, Frank had mentioned that all the colored vegetation, all the dark green trees are what's proposed. And while we did the review process here, there were certain elements in the parking lot that didn't have, um, the right spacing. There were too many parking spaces in a row. Uh, we went ahead and brought everything inside the parking lot of the code, so we added parking islands. We added a whole bunch of landscaping in the park, or in the divider median here, right now it's just sod and a few trees. Um, and then, uh, we have also screened from view the, the dumpster location in the south. And there's a generator in the south as well. And part of the review process, we were asked by the landscape consultant to go ahead and do a double screen, essentially have a landscape buffer and then screen the generator itself. Uh, we've talked, uh, in depth about the setbacks, but we, we didn't mention the building height. We are, we're permitted to go up to twenty-five feet. We are, um, which is two stories. We are at one and a half stories. The one and a half story part would be the, the food court. The volume space. Um, and so that's essentially the height of a single-family home. Um, it's, it's not three stories, it's not five stories, we just wanna make sure it is, that you folks realize it is, it is a single story. Um, and we've shown the facility expansion and this is kinda the, there was a parcel ID sign originally proposed. We've taken that out of the review, of taking that off the site plan, so there is no parcel identification sign. But there is signage to be proposed on the front porch of share, which would be the east property. When you go back, would be sitting right where the L is in the facility. Um, so we would update the graphics there and update the signage, and then we have our regular regulatory plan. And then, uh, the, the building would be dressed up, it would be painted.
The entire facility.
The entire facility, not just the expansion. Um, and these are just site photos, um, but we're here to answer any questions again.
Okay. Diane, any events?
Well, I do wanna say, forgive me, we are, um, we're also adding seventeen space, we have plenty of parking.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, there's, we're not.
That, that subject would've came up if there was a problem with parking.
Uh, that's true.
Bradford would've told us about it. Diane, no advance comments in this agenda item R five? Ray, any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Nutson, you're up again, agenda item R five.
Thank you for having me here again, once again, Paul Nutson, thirteen sixty, Donwoods Lane. Um, I, I wrote this up, but in my opinion, this agenda item five is the mother lode. The architects and developers have drawn plans to increase the building size square feet by fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety square feet, ninety-one square feet, entirely to the west and doing so requiring the agenda items R three and R four to be submitted and approved. Let us consider the existing facility that has been in place for forty years and in compliance with village code requirements and previously Palm Beach County code requirements. As best I can research, is a facility of forty-five thousand, seventy-seven square feet and houses one hundred and twenty beds within the facility. Why then is the westward construction expansion request of fifteen thousand square feet a basically an increase of thirty-three percent in size to only house twenty additional beds? So essentially half. The existing facility approximately, uh, the, uh, i- is forty beds versus the twenty beds within the same space of the construction. Upon completion of the, the last meeting and even tonight, uh, Mr. Bateman approached me and we talked about this. And he, in his own words, stated it was gonna be a surgical and rehabilitation center. Upon returning home after that meeting, I considered his words, especially surgical and research. I found the village of Royal Palm Beach does not have zoning for hospitals. With that, I accomplished more research and found that Palm Beach County has the land used as a hospital slash private. So it's, it's zoned differently by Palm Beach County. Uh, without zoning for hospital within the village and these twenty beds, obviously a lower density of occupancy, makes me again skeptical that the developer and his agents are accomplishing a shell game of distractions, but more importantly, are accomplishing a play on words. Semantics, where the specifics of section twenty-six ninety-three in the Muni code that states the use for IG zone areas does not list or accommodate hospitals. Additionally, twenty-six twenty-two of the code definitions does not specifically define services, which is a word referenced within these definitions, um, of the, the facility and so forth, uh, of, has referenced in section twenty-six sixty, senior housing facility. So that word services is not defined. And section twenty-six ninety-three of the IG induc- industrial general district lists permitted uses, which hospitals are not listed. And there is no definition of permitted uses in the Muni code also. So you're basing a decision on undefined terms, that they have definitions for all, but, but the words that they actually use in there. With that not being defined, I believe this presents a beg for forgiveness later approach by the developer. Again, I reference sections twenty-six ninety-three, IG industrial general district, section twenty-six sixty, senior housing facilities, and sections twenty-six seventy-one, additional regulations for clinics. And then with this, each voting member should have a full understanding of each of these sections and others that may apply before even considering a vote to approve this agenda item R five. So in accordance with section twenty-six ninety-three, the general, uh, the industrial general district, it states, no adverse effects are allowed to happen on surrounding residential land uses. That's quoted right out of that spec for twenty-six ninety-three. So please, each of you, before casting a yes vote, don your hats, your sunscreen and your boots, and actually visit the site with a measuring device to see just how this fully westward expansion to the building becomes essentially the new backyard of these residences. And please represent the residents of the village over corporate for profit interests.
Thank you, sir. You want to comment on that, Bradford?
Sure. So this is a rehabilitation portion of a senior housing facility. These surgical procedures are not occurring at this location, which then we would then ask questions. Is this a hospital, but that's not occurring on this property and in this facility?
Ray, anything you wanna add to that?
No, Mayor.
Okay. You wanna make any additional comments on that? Is it true what we've just decided by?
Rehabilitation, that's the only.
I just want that on the record from you, that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, alright.
And, but, but my question, I th- I think you did just clarify, but basically my understanding is you have a surgery, you go to a center like this and you've got a physical therapist to get you up and walks you around and has you do the physical therapy. So those are the services we're talking about, right? There's no, as Mr. Newton said, I mean, we can't have hospitals in the village, right? It's not a medical facility, thank you.
Yeah, there's a state process certificate of need that these kind of facilities have to go through to get approved for how many beds.
I was gonna say, does it meet the state's certificate of need requirement, yeah. Good.
Additionally, sorry, additionally on that same line of thought, the reason why you need all that extra space is because you've got big, open spaces for rehab and to do all kinds of things.
The existing facility is mostly two beds per room.
Right.
So it's, and these are all single bedrooms, and in fact, you, we're adding twenty to the one-twenty, but we're actually converting six of the existing, uh, levels in the existing facility to a private.
Just to follow up though, the reason that the, um, number of beds seems to be small for the size of the area is for, is because in part, it's the nature of what goes on in that area, right?
It's the common space that has all rehabilitation.
Exactly, so I'm recovering from total need replacement and I, I mean, I'm a visiting. So if, if my wife didn't wanna have to deal with me, that would be a place I could go for rehab, right?
That's correct.
Because that's what that is.
That's correct.
After the surgery.
So in this facility, they have stairs and doors.
It's not too late.
Chairs and cabinets and it's all, anything that you would need to get in and out of cars, get up and downstairs, up and down ramps.
Right, so that would explain the, the difference in the, in the, uh, number of beds, et cetera, because it is a different type of function, right?
Right, okay. To have this close to your house where your mother or your father or whoever needs.
Or me.
Hopefully you don't need it again.
Yes.
Any other? Comments? No? No? Well.
Well, the only comment I have though is because if we put the, the stipulation in this Bradford, as far as the living wall, which is exactly, um, I, I like how you pointed it out on there, but I think if I need something more specific on, is it, do you have a photo of the wall that would've been on the west side? That that's what the variance was asking for, so at least we have the dimensions, maybe it is to replace per code where the existing wall should've been or something like that?
The existing wall.
So on that whole west side, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where you are directly, you take the map, if you have a view cooler and you're, you've got a closer proximity to that addition, that's where I would like to.
Yeah, I'm kinda thinking the. So the, the waiver then was for the entire west side of the property? And the south and the west, right, I'm sorry, but yes, all of that, but I mean, just, but it was, it included the entire length of the west side. It wasn't just a smaller portion of the, okay, um.
So what you're showing the cursor now is what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I, I don't have, I don't have an issue with, with regular agenda item number five. I'm just trying to figure out how to word it so you're clear on exactly where we would like that to be placed.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
From what was shown in your presentation or the earlier presentation, it seems like if it is immediately adjacent to the development, which is the parking.
Right, and that's what I wanted to make sure the parking was covered, correct?
The building.
Okay.
So immediately adjacent to the new development.
Okay.
So, kind of like a landscape maintenance logistical point of view, they're probably going to be trimming these hedges at the same schedule throughout the year. And with them coming out and maintaining it at eight feet rather than six feet or at four feet, what's the difference really? So maybe you would want just the entire length of that west buffer to be maintained at eight feet.
Proposed for that entire distance.
Okay. Okay, so that, alright.
So what do we think, the entire west?
The entire west property line.
It becomes a living wall as opposed to a wall.
Does the applicant agree to that condition of approval? You have to say it on record.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, anything else? If not, then are we ready for a motion?
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number five with the condition of a living wall to go the entire length of the property on the west side.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed, the, let the, uh, Diane, let the record show that agenda item R five was approved five zero with the condition of approval which was agreed to by the applicant. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much, we appreciate your comments tonight.
You really?
Well, I, I'm just saying, we've been doing this a long time and one of the things about our village, if there's something that's going on that a lot of folks are not happy about, they show up and they let us know and we give them a chance to speak, just like we gave you. and they let us know, and we give them a chance to speak, just like we gave you a chance to speak tonight. And so, but at least we got something in there to address your proximity.